Order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Howell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Challem Charla.
Here.
Nakino.
Here.
And Kozlowski is absent.
If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to take the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our throne.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda updates?
We have agenda updates for consent calendar items four, five, and six, and public hearing item number 15. And those are revised agenda items. And then we have one additional information item for public hearing item number 15. And they are all in the back and have been distributed to the City Council.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. But please understand that because that item is not on the agenda, we are prohibited by state law from taking action or deliberating. So I don't think we have any blue cards, but is there anybody in the audience tonight who would like to address the council on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, do we have anybody on the phone who would like to address the council on item not on the agenda? Okay, hearing no one, we will move on. Please call the first item.
The first item tonight under scheduled presentations is presentation of 2021 Community Service Day results.
Christine, if you need help, I'm there for you. Yeah, I just want to.
Christine, if you need help, please talk to YK.
Vice Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Director with the City of Folsom, and I'm pleased to share with you tonight an overview of the 2021 Community Service Day, which was held on Saturday, September 21st. More than 2,500 volunteers served their community at more than 100 projects throughout our city, as well as a donation drive and a food drive. Projects that took place all throughout Folsom included a Lemby Park wheelchair accessible fitness station, parklets in the historic district, Lego sorting and packaging, Cummings Bike Park jump improvements, a baseball field renovation at rodeo park, trail stenciling at over 80 locations, and repairs to bridges along the open space near Oak Chan School, and so many more projects taking place throughout our city. About 80,000 pounds of food was collected to benefit the Twin Lakes Food Bank this year. That's nearly 25,000 pounds more food than we normally collect in a typical year. We also received generous donations at the Drive-Thru Donation Drive, including 67 bikes, 138 purses, 141 letters for the military, and 10 boxes of Legos. For the second year, we partnered with Vitalent for a blood drive, and this year, 33 pints of blood was donated by volunteers in our community. And teams of volunteers went to go help out local seniors in need, and 54 seniors received a helping hand with fence repair, landscaping, gutter cleanout, and other projects at home. This event wouldn't have been possible without the generous in-kind and cash support from our sponsors, including our $15,000 presenting sponsors, Intel and Dignity Health, our many platinum, gold, silver, and bronze sponsors. And I'm pleased to share with you a video that highlights this year's event. Folsom Community Service Day unites thousands of volunteers of all ages and interests to complete projects that have a lasting impact across the city.
We're at the Folsom Bike Park, cleaning up all the brush and overgrown greenery and getting it ready for the people to come out. We're very interested in getting out and giving back where we could. I think it's really important for most of us that work locally in Folsom to support the community that we live in. It turned out it's been great the last several years. We've always had a good time. It's just nice to see the city a little bit cleaner when we leave.
We just arrived here to give some blood today, so really getting into the spirit, dropped off some food. So we've kind of covered a number of bases. It's important to me because it's giving back and taking care of the places that we live. It just makes you feel good.
Today, we're working on a project to make wheelchair-accessible fitness equipment right here next to the Aquatic Center. So folks that are in wheelchairs can come right out of the Aquatic Center. They oftentimes will use the pool. They can come right out here and use the equipment. We try to get one big construction project going on. And so that's really how the Rotary Club of Folsom likes to give back. We try to do one really cool project that makes a significant addition that will be with the community for many decades.
We're here as part of Neighbors Helping Seniors in beautiful downtown Folsom, right near Sutter Street, working on this beautiful house here for Lois, who's been in this house since 1945, when Folsom was only 900 people. And we're trimming bushes, we're cleaning gutters, we're planting plants.
Especially our elderly community, it's very hard. It's hard to get out and bend over and trim and get up on ladders. And so for us coming out and as a threesome, we can get up and get on ladders and make sure it's a safe environment to make sure her yard gets clean.
My name is Ron. I'm with Break Construction, and we are building parklets in Folsom, California. The parklets weren't matching. They were just temporary-looking structures. So these structures are built to give a little bit of architecture and kind of go with our old-town Folsom. And thank you, the community service people. I mean, you really just made a big difference for everything.
You could feel the energy. You could see the smiles on everyone's faces as they went out on a mission to serve Folsom.
If you're interested in learning more, visit www.folsomcommunityservice.org.
And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Christine, thank you to you and to Chair Rathlin and your entire committee. We know you work on this one day. You work all year to prepare for this one day of service. Thank you to our incredible sponsors, without whom this wouldn't be possible. And of course, thank you to the thousands of volunteers who work on these 100 or so projects. So any comments from my colleagues?
I just want to say that I really appreciate what it does for our community. It brings people together. People start talking about this, about Community Service Day, like Christmas time, about the next year. So it's really neat what this one day does for our community. So thank you for all your hard work and the team that worked on this. It was another great year. Thank you.
Just one more comment. The T-shirts are a great idea. I've seen people in other social settings that end up talking to one another because somebody walks in with an old Community Service Day T-shirt on. It's like, oh, I worked on that one, too. And then people that don't know each other end up having a conversation about it. I think it's pretty cool.
We've actually heard from volunteers who collect their shirts, and so they'll come back and keep collecting their shirts for future years, too.
Yeah, I have many of them.
There is so much goes into this one. You know, I have been very closely part of the steering committee for the last four years or so. I know. It's incredible, and it is very satisfying at the end of the day, even though we start at 6:30 in the morning or 6 o'clock. Some people start at 5 o'clock, especially the people who are making arrangements, all those. It's incredible. Thank you again for pulling this one together.
Thank you.
We'll give you a few weeks off, and then you can start working on Community Services 2022. Okay? Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
The next item, number two, is scheduled presentations, utility billing, property owner accounts.
I'm Elizabeth Hannah, Revenue Services Supervisor. This evening, I will be introducing a topic related to utility billing and owner responsibility. Currently, the City of Folsom allows tenants to open and close utility accounts in their name. I will review our research and our outreach regarding best practices among Sacramento County and introduce a proposed change to our municipal code. So some background, California Health and Safety Code 5473 allows for delinquent utility charges to be collected as a direct levy on the property tax roll. Folsom Municipal Code 3.20.040 also allows for unpaid charges to be collected on the property tax roll. The Revenue Division administers the annual direct levy process to transfer these delinquent utilities to the property tax roll of Sacramento County. As a note, we did not do this in 2021 to provide relief for our customers due to COVID-19. So a little bit about our current process. We provide water, sewer, and solway services to the city. We also bill for regional sanitation in the county, and these services are not terminated or interrupted in between occupants. For residential accounts, when a customer moves into a new property, we allow rental occupants to open utility accounts in their name if the legal owner has a current business license and a $240 deposit is added to the new account. For commercial accounts, we also allow tenants to open utility accounts in their name. For single-business parcels, we generally bill directly to that parcel or to the tenant. For strip malls or multi-business parcels, we split services for billing between tenants, property managers, and in some instances, a third-party commercial bill management company. So for example, we might bill water to the property manager because there's only one water meter servicing that parcel, sewer and regional sanitation to tenants, individual tenants, and then a third company would receive the solid waste bill. So in some of our parcels, we're sending out multiple copies of bills for different services provided really to one parcel. So the reason why we're reviewing this is because it generates additional starting and stopping of accounts, final bills, refunds, or accounts with closed balances, but also because we're unable to confirm that we have correct billing information for our customers. 30% of our monthly utility account turnovers are rental properties. We process over 200 a month generally. So we rely on those property owners, tenants, and property managers to provide timely communication and accurate information. So in researching our best practices with neighboring utility districts that also provide water, sewer, solway services, we found its best practice for Sacramento County utility agencies and the surrounding areas to bill the legal owner of the parcel. There's no way for us to accurately confirm tenant information, but a legal parcel owner's information is always available to us as a county-recorded document. The legal parcel owner is also responsible for the property tax bill, which is why the best practice is in alignment with that California Health and Safety Code. So we surveyed 13 local agencies, Roseville, Davis, Stockton, Sacramento County, City of Sacramento, West Sacramento, Saks Suburban Water District, Lincoln, Placerville, El Dorado Irrigation District, San Juan Water District, Orangeville Water, and Citrus Heights Water. They all include verbiage in their ordinance explicitly stating that the legal owner of the parcel is responsible for the utility bill, and it will remain in the property owner's name. Just as a note, San Juan Water services American River Canyon, and El Dorado Irrigation District will serve part of our Folsom Plan area. So we have two agencies that would also be providing water service to our Folsom customers. So to accurately bill, efficiently provide customer service for Folsom, and follow city and county collection procedures, we're recommending that one utility would be generated per parcel, and utility accounts should remain in the property owner's name. So some of the next steps and how we would implement. So owners can still allow their tenants to pay the bill. I know that's one of our biggest concerns. We want to make sure that tenants can pay that bill. So for our residential customers, owners can provide written authorization to add tenants to their account, to receive a duplicate copy of the bill, make payments, manage services. So not too different from what we have today. For commercial customers, owners are already required to provide a copy of their property manager agreements, to have them receive a copy of the bill, pay the bill, manage services. So the biggest change for our commercial customers would be to no longer split or separate bills provided to one parcel. One parcel would receive one utility bill. So for this implementation, we would recommend an 18-month transition for our customers. So all new rental starts would receive an explanation and one-on-one communication of how the process has changed, what they need to do if they want to provide authorization to add a tenant onto the account. And it would allow us to, again, just serve our customers and provide that communication to best serve them. So with that, we will be coming to you in an upcoming meeting with our ordinance proposal.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, so you're looking for questions tonight and feedback, and assuming there's support, you would come back in the future with an action item? Okay. Any questions? YK?
It's a great move. Thank you. You did go through the regional areas. Everybody is following the same thing. I like the duplicate bills, especially for residential customers. There may be. I don't have any specific questions.
I'm good. Carrie?
I think it's a good policy. I remember thinking that it was strange when I moved to California from the East Coast, where on the East Coast, all of the utility bills, except for electric and possibly gas, everything else, anything that's health, life, safety, goes to the property owner. And I thought that was very, very strange when I owned rental properties here and wasn't required to pay those bills. I think I actually did pay them because I didn't want there to be an issue with my rental properties, so.
Right. Okay.
So I think it's a good move.
Okay. Yep, doesn't sound like you have any disagreement, so we will look forward to seeing something in the future. Anybody from the public want to speak to this? Anybody on the phone want to speak to this? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that's going to bring us to the consent calendar. Is there an item that somebody wants to pull?
I want to pull item five, but that's for recusing myself as Black and Beach is a customer of mine.
Okay, anybody else?
I want to pull 10, just for information, but we just want to pull it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move three, three, four, six through nine, and 11 through 14.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Challem Charla.
Yes.
Nakino.
Yes. Okay, that takes us to number five, and Carrie is going to recuse herself, but does anybody else have any other questions, comments?
I'll move resolution 1007-13.
Mr. Challem Charla, would you like to second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell.
Recused.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Challem Charla.
Yes.
Nakino.
Yes. Okay, number 10.
Yeah, this is more on the comment side. Seniors Helping Seniors program, it's an awesome one. You know, I just want to thank for running this one in the city, and now you are coming up. You know, let's beep up. You know, some of the expenses are more than it was several years ago, and bringing that up is good. And I'm looking at the numbers. The numbers are also how many people are making. My only question is, right now, the new dollar amount the Sacramento Housing Foundation is giving is 220K. Are we anticipating that our request may go above, and we have any area we can cover on that one?
Good evening, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. Great question. So that number did increase, as reflected in the report, and we expect that over time it will continue to increase. And at this point, the program that we're requesting the council dedicate it to is Seniors Helping Seniors, but as those dollars increase and other needs become available, we can certainly bring programming ideas to the council. At this point, we feel that there are unmet needs in the Seniors Helping Senior programs because of the dollar caps, and by making this change that will capture those, and by eliminating the lifetime cap, that with most of these dollars are going to rehabilitate mobile homes. And with the age of the mobile homes, you know, one year they may have a roof leak, the next year they might have an issue with plumbing, you know? And so removing that cap is also what we expect to be able to get us to spend all of these dollars in the Seniors Helping Seniors program.
Awesome. Now, thank you again, Elaine. This is a great program. I know there are so many people, especially the seniors, who are looking for some help. Their financial status is not that great. Thanks once again. And with that, I'm going to move this.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for resolution number 10721. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Challem Charla.
Yes.
Nakino.
Yes. Please call the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number 15, public hearing number two, under the California Voting Rights Act regarding the composition of the city's voting districts pursuant to Elections Code Section 10010.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and a member of the City Council, Stephen Wong, City Attorney. This is the second of five public hearings required by law to transition to by-district election. The purpose of these public hearings is to continually inform the public about the districting process and to receive community input for drawing future council districts. With that, very short introduction, I will turn this over to Mr. Doug Yocum of the National Demographics Corporation, the city's demographic consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. And if I could just make a comment on a comment that the council received, we received an email from Mr. Rafferty, who says, quote, "Here, the demographer is the campaign consultant for Member Nakino's father." Mr. Yocum, as I disclosed two meetings ago, did work for my father previously, but my father died July 13th, 2010, so it is not accurate to say he is my father's campaign consultant. It also says, "Given her proximity to Member Challem Charla and suggestions that she might also run for Assembly, voters may question this choice." I wasn't aware I was running for Assembly. I wasn't aware that I had suggested that. I'm perfectly happy on the Folsom City Council right now, and I do intend to complete my term. So with that, Mr. Yocum, the floor is yours.
Why not just run for president? Yeah.
Oh, gosh. Where to begin? Thank you, members of the council. My name is Doug Yocum. I'm with National Demographics Corporation, returning for the second time, bringing you up to date on what we're going to do on redistricting. And let me remind myself how to work this thing. Yep, there we go. It's different in every city. We are in the middle of the process and getting close to doing things that are actually meaningful. And I'll start with an apology. We had anticipated that the mapping tools that your staff has ordered for the city would be ready by now, but they are not. And if you go down to the third item on this calendar, you'll see that the data was released on the 27th of September. It was supposed to be released on the 20th, and it did, but it was a very flawed database. We found a lot of errors with it. We consulted with the statewide database. They went back and basically redid it and reissued the redistricting database on the 27th of September. So that put us all back by about a week of getting items ready for cities. We are prioritizing our counties because they are the ones that have a December deadline, whereas cities and special districts have an April deadline. So we're working as hard as we can, and we will have your items very, very soon. I'm sorry, I just cannot give a date at the moment. So we're at public hearing number two. This is our second public hearing, and I will attempt to educate everyone in attendance and online about how this process is going to go and what some of the requirements are. And once we get the tools online, I think I have some descriptions of the tools in this presentation, we will have an October 28th deadline to start getting some initial maps drawn, so we can analyze them and get them ready for, let me get this right, your third hearing, which is November 9th. We've scheduled another hearing, the fourth hearing in the middle of December, and then your adoption hearing will be January 11th. These are the laws that I went over last time. Basically, we have to do equal population for each district, and I actually looked it up today. The census says that you have 75,038 people. 75,038 people. And if you divide that by five, that's 15,007 people per district. That number, 75,038, will change because the statewide databases, I explained last time, is going to go through and reallocate all of the people who are incarcerated in state institutions.
Are they currently included in that 75,000?
That would be correct. This is the census's number.
Then something's bizarre, because the state of California had us at 82,000 a couple of years ago. Something's not right there.
Oh, let's, let me think. I took this off the statewide databases file, so it may already be adjusted for removing the prisoners from the City of Folsom.
I would think that that would explain it.
Yeah, that would explain it.
Because we believe that there's about that number, that that needs to be clarified.
I will clarify that for you.
Okay.
So anyway, if it's 75,000, each district would have approximately 15,000 people in each district. So that's equal population. We have to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act. We cannot draw districts by race. We cannot gerrymander districts by race. And the state has put these four criteria in priority order through the Fair Maps Act. We will follow the Fair Maps Act as we draw these districts. And I just wanted to point out that there is a prohibition in the Fair Maps Act of you shall not favor or discriminate against a political party. These are the public map drawing tools that your staff has ordered. And again, I'll explain them. They go from simple, a paper-drawn map, to computer applications. Can we log into the Sacramento County website?
Doug, while you're doing that, I have a question for you. That 75,038, let's just assume for a second that is the correct number. Is that only U.S. citizens, or does it also include people, legal residents, who are, they're here legally, but they're not citizens of this country?
It's every, as a state senator used to say to me, living, breathing people in your city.
Okay.
Okay, let's find, we're going to find the Sacramento County website, and I'm going to demonstrate some of these tools for you. Keep in mind that the county website is using a database that our company put together to estimate population at the time. This is several months old. So folks have been drawing some maps using these tools. And once we update it with the new data, the statewide database data, people are welcome to come back in and redo their maps, and we also expect some folks to start drawing their own maps using the new data. This is the paper-only map that I described earlier for Sacramento County. And what it will look like is it's a map of your jurisdiction, and it will have population numbers on it, and based on these census-tracked areas. If you look at Folsom, you'll see these are the census tracks in Folsom with population, these were our estimated population numbers at the time. So somebody would use this to, say, start in Folsom and start drawing a district here, make a circle around it, and then add up all these numbers, and submit that and say, this is how I think a county supervisor district should look. We also have a Microsoft Excel supplement with this, whereas the population units that I showed you earlier have just numbers, not population numbers. And what you do is you go to Excel, let's see if I can connect Excel on this. And what you do is you go to Excel, let's see if I can connect Excel on this. See, yep, there you go. Interesting.
Yeah.
Oh, dear. Doesn't trust your city computer. All right. Let me go back.
Might have to exit on the small box.
I'm in a county loop. I'm in the county's loop. All right. Anyway, what Excel would allow you to do is simply use those population units, and then you add them to an Excel spreadsheet, and then Excel will add them up for you. My suspicion is that this is taken offline because we're going to revise it. So then we go to what are computer-based applications? The first one is District R. You can see some folks have already drawn some maps and submitted them to the county for us. District R is an easy-to-use tool. I'll focus in on Folsom here. And let's say somebody wants to draw, tell us where the city of Folsom is. This is the paintbrush right here, and basically, this is a paintbrush application. You can make it as thick or as thin as you want. I like to keep it thin. And then someone will say, well, this is what I think Folsom is. And they'll draw Folsom for us and say, ladies and gentlemen, I think this is where I live. This is Folsom. And I think this is how Folsom should be drawn in on the county's webs, in a county board of supervisor district. So I made my paintbrush thicker there. I could, I can draw it more quickly. And if I didn't, I don't like what I did, I can click on the eraser and say, that's not part of Folsom right there. And then fill in where I think Folsom is.
And when you do it by color code, it gives you the population for that particular color code?
If you go to evaluation here, you'll see that I drew about seventy, this database had seventy-eight thousand people in what I've drawn, and I think it has part of Orangeville in it, too. But anyway, you can add layers to this. You can show Hispanics. See if it'll redraw. Citizen age, yeah. You'll see that it has now added the Latino citizen voting age population data, and there's some Latinos located here. It's the darker parts of the, or you can go to additional demographics. This is the graph of the number of children in a home. You can also use high school graduates, seventy-five thousand dollars or more, renter, college graduates. These are all census-generated data points that you can place on your map as you draw. So if I wanted to draw a supervisor district or continue, I would do something like this and go across and take all this and say, oh, this is what I'd like in a supervisor district. Try to fill that in, and then that would say, I've drawn two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand people. And then I'm not going to click save on this because this is just a demonstration, but when you click save, that sends it to the county's website, and it places that map on there and as something that folks have drawn, and they can use this feature here to describe what they have drawn, describe this community, describe this district, whatever. And then you can give it a name. You could give it your own name. You could give it District One or District Five or whatever. And you can also use this to draw a five-district plan in the county. And many, if you saw the page earlier, you've seen that some people have done that. So I'm just going to erase everything here, okay? Because I don't want to record anything that's official from a demonstration. See how the eraser works? There we go, all gone. So the final tool that we have that you've ordered and we've also have on the county website is the MapTitude Online Redistricting. By the way, we have videos that give instructions that will go on your website to explain to folks how all these tools work. And for this, you have to use a username. Hopefully, I remember my password. I have done that. No, don't say that password. MapTitude for redistricting is a very powerful tool. It's what us professional redistricters use. I will just focus in on one area of the county here, let's say Folsom. And instead of using a paintbrush for a district, it's, it uses, that's the, you can use a point, you can click by, just click point by point, and that places it in a district. You can draw a polygon. That tells you what you, what you'd like in your district. And then this change thing right here shows you what you've done so far, and it will continue to show you as you go along. This feature over here, when you make your actual districts, they will place them on a spreadsheet for you and show you what your districts, what each district is as you go along.
Doug, just a reminder, in looking at that, that red area includes the prison.
Yes.
And I'm thinking that the prison population is included in that number.
Yes, but unfortunately, this is the database that we used three months ago that estimates population.
Okay, all right.
So that, if I clicked on that block, it would contain an estimated population we had at that time.
Okay.
So this isn't the real database. And finally, this has the demographic features you can, you can add into your map as you draw, very similar to the District R program. You can put demographic factors here and see them as you draw your maps.
So as you zoom into some of these maps, are the streets labeled, like if I went looking for East Bidwell Street, am I going to be able to find that, or do I have to?
Let me see if, it's definitely on District R. I mean, you can see them very plainly on District R. I forget what the level of detail is. Yeah, they're right here. So there's Riley Street, for instance. Yes, all of that is here, and the reason, I'll just show you something. I clicked right there. That's a census block. That's how small these census units are. And so obviously, if you're drawing a district the size of a supervisor district, you may not want to do point by point, but it's important to know that this is the basic census, this is how the census divides communities. They divide everything into little blocks, and they count the people, and they, then they tell the state, here's what, how many people we found in that block. And what they did in Folsom Prison, unfortunately, and this is one of the screw-ups that they did and why it took them an extra week to do it, I told you that they were removing all the prisoners from the, from that census block, right? Let's see if I can get to it. Right up here. From that census block. But where there were still neighborhoods, in other words, non-prison portions in those, in those census blocks, their algorithm screwed up, and they started assigning new people to that area that they were trying to remove people from. So Yes, yes, that's, that's why this happened. So people from all over, us database people, were looking at these, at these new blocks and finding just monstrous numbers of people in them and saying, what the heck did the statewide database just do? So we pointed out, this out to them, and they have, they have fixed that now. We never got an explanation for why it is that that happened. But for instance
They probably didn't know any better.
I don't know. For instance, you all know that, well, you may know, that Fifteenth and R downtown is the headquarters of the Department of Corrections. So we discovered that from day one to day two, database, new database, old database, eighteen hundred people were added to the block that includes the Department of Corrections, eighteen hundred people. So we were trying to figure out what the heck was going on, and they, we never got an explanation. My suspicion is that they have eighteen hundred people in their various institutions that they don't have addresses for, so they just assigned them to their headquarters downtown. So I haven't looked since the new data's come out, but when, I'm going to see if that eighteen hundred people is down there because if that's true, city of Sacramento just got eighteen hundred new people.
Well, either that or it's the number of employees on the building. I don't know how many floors.
No, that's not something that the census would count because you have to be a resident. They don't count employees. And remember what the algorithm, the law told them to take people from their prisons and assign them back to the places where they came from, in other words, their original address. So if, if corrections didn't have addresses on these people, they may have said, well, let's just assign them to
You don't know the answer, just make one up.
That, exactly. So we'll see.
So, but if, let's say there's an inmate at Corcoran State Prison.
Mm-hmm.
That person is from Folsom, they would be included in our census data.
They would be located back in the census block, one of these little blocks, where their home was before they were incarcerated, or where they were living before they were incarcerated. That's the, that was the direction that the legislature gave to corrections and the statewide database. So hopefully, and we've been assured that the district, that the data is now correct, and it's the data that the law requires us to use, all cities, counties, special districts, school districts, and the state redistricting commission to draw their districts, that's the official database of the state of California. So I will just log out of this. You can, and I'll show you this up here, you can submit these plans once you've drawn them, and then they will end up on your website after we get them, get the maps in the shapes that people can understand. So they would click, if they want to share it with another group that they're working with, they could do it this way. They can email it to someone, or they could just click submit, and then that will go to the county, and it will end up on the website.
Yeah. Doug, is any of our, I think you mentioned residents did submit already on the website for Folsom. Is that what you said just now?
What I submit, what I said was that on the District R application for the county, some folks have already drawn some, some maps for us. They are, I could go back to that if you want to see it, but some of them are five district plans.
Yeah.
Some of them are descriptions of neighborhoods. Somebody described what the Tahoe Park neighborhood is, for instance, or Land Park or something like that. In other words, because we've been going around, the county supervisors have had a lot of hearings so far, and we've been asking
I think he's asking, I think he's asking you if any maps from Folsom have been submitted.
No. No, no one from, nothing from Folsom that I've seen on
All the maps that are on there right now are for the redistricting of Sacramento County because that has to be done earlier than ours.
Thank you, Bobby. Yeah.
Hold on just a second. To the callers on the line, could you please mute your phones until we, until we call you? We're getting a lot of noise here in the chamber. Thank you.
Any question on this before I log out of this application?
Not on this one. In general, I have assumed that residents are going to submit some maps as you are showing them, and now we are communicating to the residents. How do you take that inputs while you are developing? What is your methodology or strategy? Inputs, residents' input and your expertise, and finally, you get us on November ninth, a preliminary draft of districts? If you can explain a little bit on residents'
I will try because I, and it's difficult because I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay. No, in general, based on your experience.
Here's, here's my basic job is to consolidate input that we get from residents of Folsom. Try to, try to either categorize them together, or if they've made differing comments, separate them, and I will make a report to you on that. And I will say, this group of people believes that this community should be together, this group of people believes that this community should be together. And as, and I will describe some of the, hopefully, some of the plans that they've drawn, five districts in Folsom, and I'll say that we have three that generally divide the community this way or that way. And then I'll point out, every plan will be, I'll describe to you. I will not ignore any of them. But I will try to describe everything that's been done, and then based on that, I can put together a, what I think might be a consensus of everyone's map, or a couple of them, maybe two or three, to try to get everybody's input together in one plan. And I'm trying to describe what the process I'm thinking of in my head because I don't, I can't give you anything specific because I haven't seen anything yet. And just generally, my philosophy is if someone takes the time to make a comment, to tell us something about their neighborhood or their community.
Yeah.
I'd like to take that into consideration, but if it's something that we can't take into consideration, like, I can't think of an example right now, but
Thank you.
Something that's against the law that we can't do.
Makes sense.
Or they draw a district that's too large, I will point that out and say, this is something we can't use. Same with a district that's too small. I mean, that equal population is the number one consideration, so that's, that's the first criteria. But anyway.
So don't we have to, don't we have to know that we have the correct population data before
Yes.
We start having
When we, when we actually post the tools, it will have the correct, it will have the database that's required by law to be used.
Okay, so can we, and can we make sure that our staff is aware of this so that it can be posted on our website when all of the correct population information has in fact been posted?
Yeah, Councilmember Howell, that the tools are not yet up because we know we don't yet have the data properly filtered. And the moment we do, those tools go up so that we're confident they can be used in an appropriate way with the right data.
Okay.
That's where I started. I expected them to be here by now, but because of this delay
No, I just don't want people thinking that they can do this tomorrow.
No, we can't do this tomorrow. They could, they could play on the county side all they want, and we, at the county, would love that kind of input, but
But Doug, thank you so much for clarifying that. You're going to make every effort, you know, if you get, you know, inputs from the residents, you know, there may be a good reason why they are drawing that way.
Right.
And you may see a good nugget from that and take into consideration. Thank you. I just want to make sure that residents are aware, you are part of this, and we take every input you guys are giving. And of course, when we release the tools.
Mm-hmm, which hopefully is any day now.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go back to, back in the county Oh, here we go. Okay. Again, if anybody has their own web, their own software, they should feel free to submit to the city of Folsom's website. And that's your website address, the information phone number, and here is the email address for folks to send in their comments. They don't have to draw maps. They don't have to draw maps. They can tell us, this is what I think my community is, or this is what I think, how I think Folsom should be drawn into five districts, and we'll take, we'll take all of those into consideration as well. Are we at the video? It's time to show a video.
Oh.
Your staff has put together what I consider a fantastic video that encourages people to get involved, and basically says, hey, everybody, we're doing something here, and we'd love to have you join us. Here you go.
The City of Folsom is in the process of changing how council members are elected, and needs your help to plan and draw Folsom City Council districts. Since Folsom became a city in 1946, council members were elected through an at-large election system, where registered Folsom voters elect five city council members, regardless of where the candidates reside in the city. Under by-district elections, the city is divided into five districts, and each voter within a district will cast one vote for a candidate living within that one district. Using the new 2020 census data, the City of Folsom will work with the community to draw city council district boundaries. The goal is to make sure all five city council districts have about the same number of people. Why should you get involved? These new districts will impact how you elect your Folsom council members for the next 10 years, starting with the 2022 election. One of the goals of district elections is to ensure groups that share common social or economic interests have effective and fair representation through their elected representatives. These are called communities of interest. We need your on-the-ground expertise to make sure we've identified these communities within our city. There are many ways you can help. For example, come to our public hearings to learn more and weigh in. Let us know where you think your own neighborhood starts and ends. Ideally, neighborhoods won't be split into more than one district. You can also draw how you think your district boundaries should look like, or draw the boundaries for all five districts. You can also use an online tool that lets you create detailed maps and see the population from the latest census as you go. Or draw a paper map. If you don't want to make your own map, you can provide feedback on maps created by other community members and the city's professional demographer. Talk to your friends and neighbors, and share your thoughts with the city. We want to hear from you. Let's work together and map Folsom's future. Learn more at www.folsom.ca.us/districtelections.
That is outstanding. Thank you. I'm looking at Christine. I'm assuming she worked with City Attorney's Office and stuff to make that. Mr. Wong, a question for you. Because we do not have the census data tonight, and the map drawing capabilities are a little bit delayed, does that affect our timeline at all?
Hopefully not, Madam Vice Mayor. We're working very hard, and Doug, Doug and his staff especially, hard at making sure we still preserve the public hearing dates that we have pushed out to the community. As long as we can still meet those dates, we're gonna be fine. To the extent that we need more time, because the data is just not ready, we're more than willing to give the community more time, because after all, this is for them. This is for the residents and voters of the City of Folsom. So we will adjust the schedule if we absolutely have to, and we'll just have to see when the final data will be ready.
Steve, are we within our legal right to do that? Because everybody had anticipated that we'd be three weeks into having the data that we still don't have.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Howell, you're correct. We have, we're legally required to use the accurate data. We cannot not use the accurate data.
Okay. My point being, we were supposed to have it three weeks ago. We still don't have it.
Yes, ma'am.
So that makes me, that concerns me a little bit, that we're still trying to keep those original timelines that we set, assuming we were gonna have the data in September.
We're cautious about that, correct. We're cautiously monitoring that as well. We're facing a legal impossibility right now, but as soon as the detailed data is available, we'll see. If there's not enough time, reasonably speaking, for the residents, we will push out the other public hearings to give the residents more time.
Right. I think we need to give strong consideration to that, because we're already three weeks behind the eight ball.
Yes, ma'am.
Good. I have one quick comment on this video. Council hasn't decided we are going to adopt this redistrict election by 2022. So that video is saying the redistrict election is going to happen starting from 2022. Is that right? Is that okay to release that kind of information?
If I may address that, Councilmember Chalmers Chala, the council passed restitution intent stating the intention is to meet the November 2022 election timeframe.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm. That's what I understood.
I might have missed. Okay.
And the deadline for cities to complete their processes is April 17th of next year, because you have a November election. If you had a June election, you would be way behind the eight ball right now.
Okay. So maybe on one of those hearings at the final, council is going to endorse whatever their intent was. Is that right?
That is correct. That will be public hearing number five.
Right. As, you know, Kerry Howell, you know, Councilmember saying, like, you know, if it is pushing too hard on the dates, dates are moving, it's unfair to push those.
And we will let the public know. You're correct. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's, YK, I'm talking about the dates for the maps. We can't push this to 2024. If that's what you're thinking, that we can escape November of 2022, we cannot.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Yocum? Otherwise, I'll open the public hearing.
I just want to hear one more time, you know, number one, equal residents in every district, or equal voters, or equal residents rather than voters. I'm confused between those two terminologies. As Vice Mayor Howell, Vice Mayor Aquino was saying, not every resident has a voting power. Some sects of Folsom is heavy on non-resident, non-citizens. So how do you, how do you take that? Is that you're going by the voters, or you're going by the residents?
Redistricting must, districting and redistricting must be done using total population. That is, every man, woman, child in your, in your city. Every man, woman, child in your city, no matter what their status. The census did not ask them what their status was. The census just counted heads. And then they were, as I explained, they reported to us within each little block of your city, what, how many people are there. That's the number that we're using. Not a voter registration number, not a citizen number. We have citizen voting age population that we can use to identify communities of interest of folks who are, what they're called, protected classes under the Voting Rights Act. But when we draw districts, we must use all population, everybody.
So it has nothing to do with age? It has nothing to do with voter registration? Nothing to do with immigration status? U.S. residents, U.S. citizens? None of that matters?
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
Every man, woman, and child.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. We have one person signed up to speak here in the chamber so far. Muriel Brownstein, come on down.
Come on down. Wasn't that a TV show?
I think it's still on, yes. Welcome.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Aquino and councilmembers. My name is Muriel Brownstein. I live in the Thomas Station. I've lived in Folsom for 30 years, and to my knowledge, there's never been a council member elected from our district, an area of town. For the good of all the residents of Folsom, we must move to by-district elections. The district maps must be drawn fairly and free of gerrymandering, so as not to benefit any group or special interests. I look forward to helping draw the map of the district boundaries. May I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
How do, I can see drawing a map, now, this may have been said, and I just didn't hear it. I can see drawing a map with the areas, but how do we know where the population is?
You have to wait until the data comes out.
You have to wait until the data comes out. That's what we've been talking about.
Okay. So the data will be on a map, and it'll show how many people in each area?
Yes. It'll be input in the system. So when you click on that census tract that he was telling you, that little block, it's gonna tell you how many people are in that census tract.
Okay. Then I missed that.
And if you use the tool to draw boundaries, it would, if you use the tool to draw boundaries online, for example, it would populate for you and show you, what you've just drawn has this many people in it.
Being not very good at the computer, I was thinking more of doing mine on a paper map.
You could do that.
Where do we get the paper maps?
They'll be on the website.
So you would be able to print it off the website?
And I didn't hear quite what was said. Since you don't have the data yet, did it, was this going to delay things, did you say, or no?
We're hoping it does not. If it's possible it will, we're hoping it doesn't. We're monitoring that. And if we have to push back those public hearings, we will make sure to give the public plenty of notice.
Okay. When do we expect the data? Do you know?
We do not have a definite time at this point, no. It was incorrect. It was wrong, so they had to send it back, and now we're waiting.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in the chamber like to speak during the public hearing? Come on down. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Cheryl Davis. I'm a 12-year resident of Folsom. I just have some questions. And they go to the concern that you raised, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Howell, about timeline. According to the PowerPoint, community members should have their maps submitted by October 28th. So that's like 16 days from today. So is there a drop-dead date by which you'll say, if this isn't out by this coming Friday, we have, because you're cutting into the time community members have to be able to draw maps?
I agree.
Yep. Okay.
We are, if I may, Madam Vice Mayor and a member of the city council, this is exactly what we're talking about. We're trying to monitor this very carefully, so that if we have to, we will push back the other public hearings. Public hearings three, four, and five, we'll push them back in order to give the public more time to actually, you have to learn the maps first, right?
Right.
Learn the maps, use the maps, and submit the maps. This is all for the residents, so if we have to, we will push those hearings back, and we'll let the public know.
Okay.
And I'm of the mind right now, Steve, as I said three times already, we are three weeks behind. So in my opinion, we should be pushing these out. You know, we should start with the assumption tonight that they are gonna get pushed out. Because I agree with you. I mean, it's, we know something about this, and we're all pretty computer literate. There's gonna be a lot of people in Folsom that are not, that have never been involved in something like this. And so expecting something that we thought people were gonna have a month to mess around with, and then telling them that they have to do it in two weeks, that's unreasonable.
I do not disagree at all. The issue is, we don't know when the data will be made available.
You know, Steve, all I'm saying is, we know right now that we're three weeks behind.
What I'm also saying, Madam Councilmember Howell, is, we don't know when the data will become available. Therefore, we cannot tell the public when number three is gonna happen, when public hearing number four is gonna happen, when public hearing number five is gonna happen. We are gauging this very carefully, so that when we put out new information, they have to be accurate. And we will do that. I hear you completely. We're perfectly prepared to push them out. We just need to know when those public hearings will be pushed out, too.
Okay. Let's get through this, and then we can deliberate a little bit. Okay, keep going. More questions?
Yes, just one more. Just a clarifying question about the size of the district. So it's gonna be approximately 15,000 folks. So if it really would cut into like a natural, like, some of our communities already have their names, you know, Empire Ranch, or American River Park, or-
American Canyon.
Thank you. Thank you. So is there a plus or minus factor to the 15,000 that's tolerable, that we know of?
There is, and I'll let Mr. Yocum go over that again.
The maximum deviation that courts have allowed is 10% total deviation. That means plus five, minus five. It doesn't mean 10%, 10% for one district and 10% for another. It means your total deviation for your, for your entire plan, all five districts, can be no more than 10% deviation. We don't recommend that we do that, because 10% can be 5% here, or 7% here, 3% here. Some people would say that that's not equally populous, and I think we had this discussion last time, based on a 15,000-person district. So we would recommend that you keep each district within 1% to 2% within, within the 15,000 folks. And that would, then, you could be able to say, these districts are equally populous, and each, each district is equally represented compared to the others.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Davis?
No, that was it. But I would like to say, I had some email exchanges with your city attorney's staff, and they were very responsive, because I was looking for the data, and they were telling me what was going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on down. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to speak, councilmembers. And I am new to Folsom. I've been here only a couple of years, so I'm starting out from a point of less, of ignorance. When the gentleman mentioned, you know, this 18,000-person discrepancy in one of the government buildings in the county of Sacramento, I realize we don't have that many government buildings in the City of Folsom, per se, but is there some data proofer or checker that looks to see that we don't have those kinds of discrepancies within our own commercial and governmental buildings? Or are we just gonna assume, you know, once they fix the prison stuff, that it's all correct?
Well, I think Mr. Yocum is our data checker, but I'm gonna let him answer that question for you. And it wasn't 18,000, it was 1,800.
I'm sorry.
So not, not quite that bad, but I can get your point.
And it's still related to the Department of Corrections, because it's their headquarters, was the issue.
Because, because this is what we're using, all our clients are using it, we very carefully checked the data that came out on September 20th, and we found these errors. And specifically, the one I was referencing has to do with here, is that they took the folks out of Folsom prison, but for some reason, they added a whole bunch of people back in. It made no sense. So we reported it to the statewide database. They have now assured us that it is fixed, but they did not give us an explanation of why it happened. So they've told us it's fixed. And the data that was issued on September 27th is the, is the data that, according to state law, everyone must now use.
So I guess what you're saying is, your, your proofers thoroughly checked the Folsom data, and the only big discrepancy you found was that particular location?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else here in the chamber? Come on down, Mr. Cornell. And we'll get to you folks on the phone in just a minute.
For Mr. Yocum, won't get any rest tonight. Vice Vice Mayor Aquino, my name is Ian Cornell, member of the city council. I'm a resident and business owner in Folsom. And I'm thinking about the Folsom Plan area, where there's currently many residents who were not counted in the 2020 census, and there'll be, by the time 2030 census rolls around, there'll be many, many more. So that'll put somebody's district out of balance. So I'm just wondering, Mr. Yocum could answer how that, how the future growth is handled, this sort of thing? And as they say on the radio, I'll take my answer off.
Thank you.
As I explained at the last meeting, you have a ability to take into consideration an area that is going to grow in population over the next 10 years. You can choose to under-populate that district, which necessarily means that you have to over-populate one of the other districts. And I gave you the parameter of 10% total deviation. And the admonishment, not to take that too far, because we are talking about the number one consideration must be equal population, which I just explained. So you can take that into consideration, and you can draw that into your plan. We can see what it looks like. But again, I don't recommend that we go overboard on that particular issue.
Okay. And when the census data comes in, and it shows, based on the 2020 census, 1,000 people living south of 50, and we know that today there are 2,000, we still have to use that 1,000 number?
That is correct.
Okay.
And in 10 years, when there's 15,000 people there, you'll have to redraw that area based on that number of people.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else here in the chamber want to speak during the public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll go to the phone. Is there anybody on the phone who would like to comment? Thank you for your patience. We don't have them muted, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, this is Scott Rafferty. So at the last hearing, YK asked if the council could instruct NDC to draw maps that save the council members. And Mr. Yocum replied at 1:45, "You are in control. If you tell me to do something, that's how I'll do it," end quote. Now, NDC told you in that presentation what the law is, respect communities of interest, and you can't intentionally divide them. Two pages later, they assured you they would do the exact opposite. They said that whenever the council considered that a particular community of interest would benefit from having multiple representatives, they could split it. And gave the example of a retirement community. Of course, the retirement community would benefit. Their high turnout, combined with low turnout in minority districts, could determine the outcome of two races, or maybe more. That's very definition of voter dilution. That's why we have a new anti-germandering law prohibits dividing communities of interest. It would have been better to have public input on the choice of your demographer, because we have a long record of gerrymandering by NDC. I'm involved in several other proceedings with other demographers. Nobody seems to be having any data problems. It's interesting that on one particular day, a government office building had 1,800 people, and it was corrected, apparently, in the state of 39 million people. That's not actually an excuse to stop the process, and nobody else is doing this. Tomorrow, day after tomorrow, Placer County Board of Education is finalizing its map. The counties are finalizing it, every county in the state is finalizing it. No other company is playing this dacha game to buy time. If you are going to extend the hearing, you should probably be talking to the petitioners. But I want to talk to you that court is not the solution to all of this. In San Juan Valley, in New Jerusalem, they did these gerrymanders, and the people that they were intended to benefit were apparently so embarrassed, they decided not to run for reelection. And so ultimately, the people are not willing to approve of this. You need to cut square corners here, and delay is not always more public participation. You're behind by three weeks, and other jurisdictions are not. So I don't think this can be blamed on the statewide database. I use it all the time. I've seen mistakes. They get fixed quickly. It doesn't stop the process. So I'd urge you to keep moving. I think you're gonna have to watch NDC very closely. And you can't just candy stripe and try to create five microcosms of the city where the status quo has 51%. This is supposed to be giving dedicated voices to each community, minority communities, but other communities of all races, to the benefit of the voters. And I think you're gonna be held to account by the voters, not by the courts. And I urge you to, again, cut square corners. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else on the line who would like to comment? Okay, hearing done, we are going to close the public comments. Are there any final questions, comments?
I have none. Okay.
Well, thank you, Ian, for asking that question about, we are in a heavy construction side right now, you know. That number is going to be a little bit up and down, but this council can easily handle that one, I think, you know. Even though it is 2% to 10% variance, I think it's manageable. That's all I can say, because, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Yocum. Thank you all for being here. Okay.
I have one more comment to make. Maybe, oh, yeah, to Mr. Wong. Is that a good idea, at least to put some highlights on our website? We are still waiting for the data, so the following dates probably are going to be adjusted. Some kind of disclaimer, if it is not there already?
We will make adjustment as soon as tomorrow morning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Next item, please.
Next item is Old Business, item number 16, resolution number 10719, a resolution approving Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation with respect to the design, engineering, and phased construction of Benevento Family Park.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm sorry. I'm Brad Nelson. I'm the senior park planner. This item is the Benevento Family Park. I wanted to start out with a timeline to bring you up to date in why we're here, why I'm here this evening. At the May 26, 2020, City Council approved $3 million in impact fees to be used for the design, engineering, and construction of Benevento. Staff was also directed at that City Council meeting to discuss options for completing Benevento with the Parks and Recreation Commission to determine if the funding appropriated for the design and construction was indeed the best use of those impact fees. On June 24, 2020, the Parks and Recreation Commission formed the Benevento Ad Hoc Subcommittee. On August 25, a design contract was approved by the City Council for Wilson Design Studio Landscape Architects to do the planning and design for Benevento Family Park, as well as Neighborhood Park III. On May 25, 2021, the Benevento Ad Hoc Subcommittee met to review the preliminary concept ideas and an updated rough order of magnitude cost estimate. On July 19, 2021, the Benevento Ad Hoc Subcommittee met again to review the needs assessment and its influence on moving forward with Benevento. So the needs assessment was a survey that was conducted recently by the Parks and Recreation Department to help us in determining, or finishing out, our park master plan. At the September 22, 2021 Parks and Recreation Commission, the commission recommended to the City Council to move forward with respect to the design, engineering, and the phased construction of Benevento Family Park. Some of the items that were discussed with the Subcommittee and with staff, we reviewed the general plan, the parks master plan, the Folsom Municipal Code policies. We also looked at information on the Empire Ranch parks and what's remaining to be built there. There are six parks in Empire Ranch that were originally planned. To date, two of them have been constructed, so Benevento would be the third park in Empire Ranch. There is a policy in both the general plan and the municipal code related to providing five acres of parkland for every 1,000 residents. Currently, we have about 280 acres of developed parkland, and really, we should be closer to 400 acres. There are also gaps that are in the city for a 10-minute walk to a park. So one of the goals from the general plan, and also, it's a campaign from the NRPA, which is the National Recreation Park Association, to provide, excuse me, a park within a 10-minute walk of every residential home. So 10-minute walk is basically about a half-mile radius. We also looked at possibly including, during the initial design process, about including other program facilities that might be different from the original master plan. And so we looked at adding sand volleyball courts, which could provide potential revenue-generated opportunities that would potentially offset the park maintenance costs. The Subcommittee was involved in this process, really for the last year or so, as well as the, more recently, the Full Park and Rec Commission. So some of the Ad Hoc Subcommittee looked at all the documents and provided the following. The completing Benevento aims to meet the requirements of the Folsom Municipal Code toward providing the five acres of parkland per 1,000. It meets the policies of the general plan by providing parks in all neighborhoods. It supports the NRPA campaign to provide parks within a 10-minute walk. It provides equitable park development in Empire Ranch. And through the inclusion of an eight-court sand volleyball complex, there are recurring revenue-generating opportunities available at the park. One of the final pieces that the Subcommittee looked at and helped influence their decision was the results of the needs assessment. So the needs assessment overall indicated a high satisfaction with the city's park system and our facilities and our programs. The final question of the needs assessment asked respondents if they preferred an active or a passive park, if a new park were to be developed. And the result was a preference for an active park. So we looked at what could potentially be built there. This plan is from the 2015 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So just to orient you, this is Broadstone Parkway, Carpenter Hill Road here. On this side is Vista del Lago High School. If you're familiar at all with the site, there's, this is a very large, flat area. And then there's a pond that's in the middle, and then there's a tier that's the next level up here, and then another tier, sort of a terrace, that's sort of at the top. So that was more or less our starting point. We looked at some of the considerations of what might actually go in, in terms of program facilities. So we looked at soccer, which was on the original, which was on the original master plan. We conducted some analysis from 2013 to 2019, and we discovered that participation in soccer has actually been decreasing. And in 2018 and 2019, only 55% and 57% respectively of allocated and booked field time was used. So we started looking at what might potentially replace soccer. So cricket has always been one of the facilities that we are hoping to include at one of our park sites. It's the second most popular sport in the world. There's currently about 640 active cricket players in the city of Folsom. And Folsom Cricket Club has been a member of FAA, the Folsom Athletic Association, for 20 years. And they're the only member that doesn't actually have a dedicated facility in Folsom. So through some analysis and research, we determined that cricket might be a really good fit for Benevento. But then we actually went to go fit it on the park site, and it doesn't fit. It's actually too big for that lower terrace. It would result in too much grading occurring. So the next thing we looked at was potentially providing sand volleyball courts. There's been a resurgence in sand volleyball. It's a growing sport. There are really no large venues in Northern California, so by providing potentially an eight-court sand volleyball complex...
And we can terrace those, right? So you don't have to do mass grading? You can have them on different levels?
For the volleyball, yes, yes. And that lower terrace closest to Vista is a very, that's a large, flat area. So we also looked at potential revenue opportunities, and we determined that by renting out an eight-court volleyball complex would just about cover the annual cost for maintenance for the park. So in terms of budget, the approved budget for fiscal year '21-'22, $3 million was approved. The remaining funds to complete a phased park is $2.4 million. So that would come from impact fees, most likely, or general fund and/or grant. So the total cost for the phase one would be $5.4 million. And then, just sort of a cost summary, the 2015 master plan, the Park and Rec Master Plan, identified Benevento, the complete build-out, as costing $3.9 million. We updated that in the 2018, 2019 budget documents to $5.4 million for just the phase one. And then, most recently, the rough order of magnitude for the complete build-out of Benevento came in at about $8 million. So the Park and Recreation Commission and Benevento Ad Hoc Subcommittee have determined that the design, engineering, and construction of Benevento Family Park should continue in a phased fashion for reasons shared previously here. Next step would be to take a concept plan, a little more advanced plan than the next one I'm gonna show you to the public, and then begin the public outreach process and the plan development review process. So this is an updated schematic plan, a little different than the one I showed you previously. So this has Broadstone Parkway on the top, Carpenter Hill Road here, and then Vista del Lago is over here. So we still have this large terrace area here. One of the additions that we included in this schematic was providing a lowered parking area down here. We thought it would be better in terms of location, instead of just having the parking lot up here off of Carpenter Hill Road. We also removed all of the, there were previously some park facilities back behind these three residential units here. So essentially, all the active park facilities have been removed from those houses. The red bubbles that you see, those are social gathering areas here. And then we have potential room for a play area here, trails connecting throughout the whole park site. And we really wanna take advantage of this pond. It's really, the site can really be unique, as all our park sites are. And I think if we take some advantage by introducing something like a bridge or a dock out into the pond, it would really make this park even more special.
So can we define social gathering areas? Is that like picnic areas?
It would be like group picnic areas, yes.
Okay, can we just call them that?
Sure.
We'll make that change immediately.
Landscape architects say it sounds better.
We don't need to create any more lingo.
Okay. So the recommendation, oh, sorry. Apologize. Staff recommends that the City Council approve Resolution Number 10719, a resolution approving Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation with respect to the design, engineering, and construction of Benevento Family Park. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? I don't have any. No? I have a question. Just in terms of the design, has the parking, what some would call a parking issue at Vista del Lago, been factored into the design of this park?
Actually, it has. And part, by introducing this parking lot here, that would, that would...
How many spaces would that be approximately?
That's about 70.
Oh, wow, okay, all right. Okay.
We, when you go out there, it's really, it's a hall from here.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
If you were to go down there, and there would be, it just doesn't seem logical, even, not only for the high school use, but for any of these sports facilities down here.
So there would be an entrance and exit off Carpenter Hill, and then for that small parking lot, you would enter and exit off Broadstone Parkway. When you're coming out, you'd have to turn right?
It would be right in, right out, correct.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Carrie, any questions? Okay, any members of the public like to comment on this? Okay, seeing that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution 10719.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chalum Cherla?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, is that you also?
It is.
Okay.
The next item is New Business, number 17, Resolution Number 10722, a resolution approving the preferred master plan for Neighborhood Park Number Three in the Folsom Plan area.
Good evening again, Madam Vice Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Brad Nelson. This is the Neighborhood Park Three Preferred Master Plan. Neighborhood Park Three is in the Folsom Plan area, of which you are all very familiar. 3,500 acres total, 1,000 acres plus of open space, over 130 acres of parks, and 30 mile, 30-plus miles of trails. This map shows the park sites in the Folsom Plan area. We have two community parks, five neighborhood parks, and four local parks. The parks are the dark green. So, this is like Community Park West. The first park to be built is Neighborhood Park Three, which is what I'm presenting to you tonight. We started with, similar to what you saw for Benevento, we started with a very rough schematic-level drawing. This was done in conjunction with the rough grading of Mangini Ranch Elementary School, which is directly to the east. So, to get your bearings, this is Mangini Parkway. This is Sparrow. And then, there's an open-space corridor here, Mangini Ranch Elementary School here. We developed two different schematic plans. And we presented those to all of the residents in the Folsom Plan area at a virtual meeting that was held on June 9th. Both of those plans contained a cricket field. For the reasons previously mentioned at Benevento, we feel that a cricket field is warranted. And we thought that this, that Neighborhood Park Three might be the location for that. During the meeting, the residents were allowed to provide or input in voting on three different, at three different times. The first one was, first time they were able to vote on two different design plans, schematic B1 there. The second opportunity was to provide input regarding the amenities that we were showing on the plan in case we, the community felt like we missed something. So, in that, the sand volleyball court was definitely something that they felt we missed as well as the nature area down here. The other was just a mixture of things. There was no particularly one thing that stood out. Then, the last opportunity for input was a theme for the park. Through our historical research of the site prior to the Mangini family owning it, we came up with four themes: Gold Rush Mining, Old Hotels and Inns and Suites, Ranching and Grazing, and then, the old Lincoln Highway. The Gold Rush Mining theme was the preferred theme that was voted on. During that virtual meeting, which was recorded, there was a very lively chat session where people were able to type in. And we received a lot of feedback around the cricket field. Before the meeting was even finished, I was receiving emails and others here. Perhaps some of you received emails with regard to the cricket field, feeling it wasn't appropriate for, was not appropriate at this park site. We immediately, like within the next day, we started scheduling a second community meeting so we could present a plan to the community and get their feedback on a plan that did not include cricket. So, we had an onsite meeting held at the actual park site on July 14th. We had 121 people in attendance. And at that meeting, they were able to vote for these two plans here. The plan on the left was one of the original plans, slightly modified. And that shows the cricket field in the middle. And then, the plan on the right with no cricket field. The plan on the right received 102 votes, and the plan with cricket received 19 votes. At the September 22nd, 2021 Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, the commission forwarded a recommendation to the city council to approve the Neighborhood Park Three Preferred Master Plan. And staff recommends that the city council approve Resolution Number 10722, a resolution approving the Preferred Master Plan for Neighborhood Park Three in the Folsom Plan area. I have the Preferred Master Plan here. I'll take you through it. So, on the north side, north edge of the site is Mangini Parkway. We have Mangini Ranch Elementary School on the east. To the south is Sparrow Drive. And on the west is an open-space corridor with seasonal wetlands, as well as a bike trail along the edge. We have pedestrian entrances to the park, basically in the four corners. There's one here. There's a pedestrian entrance up here, over here, and down over here. We also have a pedestrian entrance off of Crawford lining up with the street crossing here. And then, we have an entrance into the school site. There is an existing gate there. This is the aftercare building. There is an existing gate there. And we are working with the school, the principal there. And that, the gate is actually currently open. And there will be access after school and on weekends to the school site. So, the school is in control of the gate. They lock it and open it. I'll just kind of walk through some of the elements of the park. So, we have a 118-stall parking lot down here with only one entrance and exit located down here further. It lines up with the open-space corridor. It's a very simple looped parking lot. And we have a generous drop-off area here. We have a lighted ball field here with spectator seating, dugouts, bullpens, storage, and fencing. We have a large, open grass area here, as well as over here. And that's really for a multi-use field. We could bring in portable goals for soccer, paint lines. It also could be used for ultimate frisbee, for rugby, for other festivals and fairs, and for farmers' markets. So, we really, it's two fairly large, flexible spaces. In response to the, in response to the community input, we added two sand volleyball courts here. We also, in both of the original plans, we had a dog park. And in this plan, we have the dog park up here. That actually received some really positive comments back. So, we have two separate areas for larger dogs and another area for smaller dogs here. This area, sort of in the center of the park, really serves as the heart of the park. We have a group picnic shelter here. We have a play area here with two separate areas, one for two-to-five-year-olds and then, one for five-to-12-year-olds. We have a restroom.
Are we going to check IDs on those kids?
Social gathering, yes.
Social gathering for dogs? And can, just one other suggestion with regard to the dog park area, can we, let's learn from, some lessons from things that we maybe didn't make some really good choices on, choices for, with the existing dog park?
Yes.
About the, you know, the turf and what happens in the winter?
Right. We won't be doing turf. We'll be doing, similar to the one up in Rockland at Johnson Spring View Park. So, they have a bark mulch up there.
Okay.
It's very successful. And so, that's the route that we're heading.
Okay, because I know, we haven't had any issues with the little dog side, but there has been significant ones with the big dog side.
The turf is really challenging to keep looking even somewhat decent.
Yeah.
Yes. We have a full-size basketball court here. And then, we have two hardcourt areas here capable of being, we will most likely stripe them for tennis with something similar to a pickleball layout. So, you can do four pickleball layouts over one, over one tennis court. And then, one of the other things that we got from the public meeting was to include more nature areas. So, we're actually bringing a portion of this open-space easement into the park here. And the idea being that the, a lot of these fields and these areas would drain into this. And then, we'd have some bridge crossing. And it really creates sort of a natural area in the heart of the park. And that is Neighborhood Park Three. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I know, Chad, you mentioned, oh, mine is not working as effectively as it was tall. You said it is a, yeah, the two sides tall in between the trees and all those. Can be still used as a rugby court? How does that equation?
So, we, we could use it as rugby. We could, it would most likely be used for soccer if we determined that we needed soccer. So, in soccer, does, there's a, this area would fit a U-12, and we'd be able to fit two U-8s here.
Okay.
A cricket field would not, does not fit there. It is quite large.
Yeah. The other one is, I know, I usually get quite a few requests when I walk in the community about the volleyball courts. I know we are accommodating already two of the sand volleyball courts.
Yes.
There is some spot on the upper side, whether, I know it's already $8 million estimated. I'm clear on that. And you and Lorraine are going to be creative to get some grants, you know, the money out there. Is there a possibility whether we can think of putting that a grass or turf option for volleyball, not the sand?
So, that's a great point. And basically, grass volleyball can go anywhere.
Yeah.
So, these, these areas here will be very flat. So, a grass, we could very easily put, somebody can bring in a volleyball net and install that for grass volleyball.
Okay, so, city is not giving that option. On that side, I'm talking, on 17 and the, close to the Mangini Ranch, there is a small strip, which is, you know, perfect fit probably for grass volleyball. City can give those poles and net, and people can come and play. I'm just putting it out there. Otherwise, people always bring their own, and they can play wherever they want. That's a different story.
Right.
I'm asking more from the city side as a dedicated, specified spot for grass volleyball.
I, the grass, the, from our research, the sand volleyball is much more in demand than the grass volleyball.
True, but.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to put that out there, that demand and are increasing the code to three, however it is.
Right.
It is widely heard and used, you know, from the community.
I think if, if we did have the demand for that, we could very easily install something that would be a little bit more permanent, like I said, because these are generally flattish areas.
I think that's all. I like that all the greens, you know, hopefully, especially on the parking spots, may be a decent shade trees.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, and as far as cricket, I understand it's not going to be at this Neighborhood Park, but are we planning a cricket field somewhere south of 50 at a larger community park?
We have started looking a little bit at Community Park East. Community Park East is already, there's a lot of program facilities there. So, and the cricket field is about three and a half acres in size. So, it takes up a large chunk.
And it, can there not be some dual use there where it's?
There can be, yes.
There can be, okay.
So, the, the thing with a cricket field is the center is the cricket pitch. And it's a very hard surface. So, it's 14 feet wide, it's about 50, 50 feet long. And so, we could do two soccer fields that would straddle that with the cricket, with the pitch, the cricket pitch in the middle, because it's a hard thing. But you can't really have it in the pitch in the middle of any sort of a field play.
Got it, okay. And then, I'm going to ask about parking again, because in my experience, when a park is either adjacent to a school or backs up to a school, I'm thinking of Empire Oaks or Folsom Middle, it's very common for parents to say, "I'm going to pick you up in the park parking lot," right? Because they don't want to deal with the traffic at the school. Is, is that, is this design conducive to that?
It is, yes. And we've, the, so, there's, like I mentioned, there's a drop-off area here. And with the access to the school site here, it would be fairly easy for kids to walk down over there. We also have talked to, as I said, the principal at Mangini Ranch Elementary. And they are leaving, currently, they're leaving the parking lot open after school and on the weekends. So, and they would allow us to use if there's a larger.
Nice.
If we need extra parking during the weekend or after school.
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public? If there's anybody from the public left out there who want to comment on this item? Anybody on the phone want to comment on this item? Okay, if there's no other questions or comments from the council, entertain a motion.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howe.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Chalan Charla.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to city manager report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Aquino. Last week, the city announced two new programs designed to reduce residential water use. The new incentive programs are part of the city's effort to help the community be more efficient with their use of water. Folsom is under a Stage Three Water Conservation Warning, and water customers are required to reduce water use by 20%. So, we are offering the Cash for Grass Turf Replacement Rebate Program, which provides incentives to City of Folsom water customers for converting their lawns to water-efficient landscapes. And we are also offering the new Smart Home Water Monitoring Rebate Program, which is where you can get a rebate on the Flume Smart Home Water Monitor. You can find out more about both of these rebate programs on our website. Please join the Folsom Police and Fire Departments for a Public Safety Trunk or Treat Event from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 30th. You can trick-or-treat safely as you check out police and fire vehicles and equipment. Please no costumes that include weapons. And you can find out more at our website as well. And the city is seeking name submittals for the first Gold Rush Mining themed park that you just heard about in the Folsom Plan area, which we currently refer to as Neighborhood Park Three. It needs to be named something else. So, if you would like to submit a name, please go to our website, and we would welcome that. Thousands of our residents and visitors will honor local veterans at the 21st Annual Wayne Spence Folsom Veterans Day Parade on Thursday, November 11th. The parade will be held, rain or shine, beginning at 9:00 a.m. on East Bidwell Street in front of the Target/Home Goods Shopping Center. And if you're interested in entering the parade, you should enter by Friday, October 29th. And finally, I'm very pleased to announce that I have named Public Works Engineering Manager Mark Rackaman as the city's new Public Works Director. Mark has served the city at the highest level for almost 25 years. And I know he will bring all of his skills to work in expert fashion for his department, our community, and all of you. So, congratulations to Mark.
Thank you very much. Carrie?
Nothing significant to report on any of the regional committees and commissions that I sit on. We have, I believe, our next RT Board meeting is next Monday. There's a Regional Sand Board meeting tomorrow. And I think our next Connector JPM meeting is, I think it's two weeks from now. So, nothing, nothing significant to report on any of those. The usual, I did actually go out for about an hour today running Samarins from bank to bank to post office, that sort of thing. And I think at every single light I went through, that I had a, you know, the occasion to drive through while the light was green, I saw at least two people run red lights at every location between Riley Street, Safe Credit Union, and back over here. So, please stop doing that. Somebody's going to get hurt. We do have one more meeting before Halloween. So, just advance warning about kids trick-or-treating. Please be careful and make sure that you're driving very carefully and make sure that the children in their adorable little costumes are able to be seen by the bad drivers. With that, good night. Oh, and congratulations on your other personal happy news, Mark, about time.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Rosario?
Well, we have, the Folsoms leading youth professionals are having their nonprofit showcase this coming Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. If you've never been to one of these, this is a great event that showcases all of our nonprofits, and we have so many good ones. There's a $20 cost that goes to your favorite nonprofit. Also, the Twin Lakes Food Bank is having their Gala or Gala, whatever you prefer, on Friday, November 5th. This is their number-one fundraiser of the year. And as we know, the food bank serves the communities of our college students, the unhoused, our senior citizens, low-income families. So, they do a great job in our community. And also, for all you country music lovers, Sonny Mitchell, who has the Wildwood Performing Arts Foundation, has been having a concert for the past three months. And it is coming up this coming weekend, the Folsom Americana Fest. And they are looking to recruit volunteers. So, if you love country music, this is a great way to volunteer and also enjoy a concert. And I also want to get just a quick update on Ira Graham. Ira Graham spent 40 years with addiction and being unhoused. And he moved into the Bidwell Apartments today. He is doing such a great job. I cannot give enough kudos to. I cannot give enough kudos to Jeannie from Jake's Journey Home, who really helped build the relationship and mentor him and get him in, and also to Heart of Folsom that was instrumental in getting him into the Bidwell Apartments. And also, congratulations, Mark Rackman, on your promotion, and go Giants.
Go Giants.
Thank you. YK?
Good. Mark, I'll start with you. Congratulations. You know, that's a very key department, Public Works, of course, other departments too, since it is your, you know, you are there. Thank you for taking up that leadership role. Yep, we'll work together. Thank you once again. As a part of the school district two-by-two, I have started reaching out to Scott Meyer and asking him some additional information about our fifteen schools. While we have the school resource officers, what else the school district is supplementing to have the security and watchdog kind of thing? So I'm actively working with him, and I ask a few questions, but he is very informative and very helpful. I'm feeling more comfortable after talking to him. And the other one is, you know, I joined the CAPS monthly meeting a couple of weeks ago. It's a wonderful group of people. I always want to, you know, thank them enough, you know, more than enough, and tell them that their service is always acknowledging by the residents and the city council. Right now, I think the CAPS number is going down to fifty-five, fifty-six, something like that, than the seventy-five. So I told them that, you know, when I go around in the neighborhood, wherever I meet people, so at least I encourage them to join CAPS, serve our town. And the other one is, Marcus, thank you so much for inviting me for the Regional Water Authorities Meeting. It was very informational. One big thing I learned, I had a huge anxiety before, water bank is coming. So I learned that one after reading and again, talking to several people, and, but it is in ten years. So, so in about ten years, it is going to come, but I still have my concerns. If the same dry season continues for next couple of years, how are we going to serve the water to our residents? I'm still learning, so I'll probably bring it to our, you know, council members, you know, what my findings are, and of course, I always in touch with Marcus as well. So one, one positive comment I want to pass here, when I was at the RA, Regional Water Authority, meeting with so many agencies, and the minute I said, "I'm from Folsom," they said, "You have an awesome director for water and environmental." Marcus, thank you so much for putting that impression and, you know, making sure we are doing everything we can. Thank you. I just want to pass that here.
I still think you should have a YouTube channel or something like that, podcast.
The other one, I think, as our city manager mentioned, we do have more offerings on the rebate programs, especially the smart water meter. Please, I highly encourage residents to take upon that, and the city is working with the manufacturer, and the city is giving a huge rebate on that as well. It helps city to, you know, conserve the water. The more you know how much you are using, usually you tend to reduce that one. And the other one is, Elaine, I know I have been telling since I joined here, I always have my technology hat. When Mr. Doug was, you know, talking about the Excel spreadsheet, I was thinking, "Click that button," I was, I was saying to myself. So saying that, you know, I have been very strong on technology. I have been talking to several local residents who are the Folsom residents and experts in the technology. They want to help us. So one of these days, I'll bring, you know, lack of better word, I'm calling Technology Committee, but that's nothing to do with our city hall. So, but people want to help us to serve better with the technology, and they want to give recommendations, how smart city world is going on, and all those things. One of these days, I'll bring it to you, and with that, thank you again, and good evening.
Thank you. I'll add my congratulations to Mark, very well deserved, and thank you to Marcus for acting as our, acting Public Works Director in addition to all your other duties. Just one final thing, I was reading today about fire in Ileton with some, loss of some mobile homes. I, I just always felt like Folsom kind of has a special kinship as one of the fig cities. I'm sure you've already reached out to your fellow city manager, but maybe if we suggest to the mayor, you know, a letter of support or something like that from our city to theirs?
Absolutely.
Okay. And it's eight-
That's important in the case of Ileton, because of your very small population, you're under a thousand.
Yeah. Eight twenty-five, we are adjourned. Thank you.